They obviously don't have a problem using your reading.
Obviously.
Cheryl, Cheryl!
Alright, what happened to your Brigham Young? We need to talk about this?
It's the first conference game in 12 years. You know, Kansas is pretty good this year.
Kansas got how that works?
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Kansas is better than people think.
They are. I'm excited to play Texas this week, I'm nervous.
Oh, well, I would, Texas is good, so.
Yeah, I'm a little shell shocked for the last few years. C.T., would you like to talk about your Texas Tech Red Raiders? Would you like to address the elephant in the room?
That's a tough one.
Do you all have a band?
Oh yeah, we're gonna have a game show. Alright, y'all have a good day. We're gonna have a four-H game show.
Oh, really?
This is not only gonna be an informational meeting, it's gonna be a entertainment. No, you're on time. I just, I know the back clock. My faith in that clock is very low, but very low. I trust the phones, but I always leave mine in there because I'm afraid it'll ring.
I can ring it off, that's what I do.
I put it off. I just now, I leave it in another room. I don't wanna do that guy. I'm anxious, I'm anxious. I don't wanna want to give anyone, you know, anyone who have the opportunity. I called this meeting of the Young County Commissioners Court to order, let the record show that it is 9:30 a.m. and all five members of the court is present. We're streaming on YouTube, if you'd like to make comments, you may call in at 940-221-2107. Today, we have a special guest, Aaron Goins. He's the First Actist Church of Newcastle Head Preacher, Head Minister, Preacher. And even more, I think it's really cool that he's speaking here, he's part of Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department. And he's been part of the group that's been protecting our county during this wildfire season. And it's been really, it's been great for me to get to know Aaron. So if you're able, please stand for our invocation.
Just pray. Darren, Father, we just thank you, Lord, for just a time that we can bow our heads, Lord, and just honor you and lift you up in this room. God, I pray today, Lord, that you would just give our county officials and all those who are working in this room, Lord, just some wisdom and discernment, Lord, that everything that they do, Lord, that as they serve our county and serve our people, Lord, that you would help them in the process of doing the people's business. And so, Lord, we just thank you for who you are. Lord, may we be lights in our positions, so that folks can see who you truly are. And, Lord, let us be, let us be leaders in this community that will stand for what is right. Lord, we love you today, and we praise you for who you are and you alone. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas pride, I pledge allegiance to leading Texas, one state, united, long, individual.
Thank you. Item number three, public comments. Do we have any public comments today? Wonderful, have y'all signed into the sheet?
No.
Is the sheet? Timmy, we don't have a sheet. Never mind, we know who y'all are, come on in.
Good morning.
Good morning!
We're coming here representing Young County's whole commission. It has been known by some of us that the county has received registered Texas store marker for the 19th month jail that will arrive here, I believe, the 11th of September. They've known that it's about a week later. So we made a, we have a, we're organizing a celebration and a dedication to that. It will be October 7th at 1:30 p.m., that's on Saturday, October 7th. And I'll let Susan, our vice chair, if you will, address the court.
Yes, thank you. So, we just wanted to make you a welcome and let you know that this is really an exciting time for us. This will be our first marker dedication that I've been part of, and I've been on the commission since 2011. So, we'll be inviting the surrounding counties. And it's, it's just gonna be a wonderful celebration for a marker that's been in the works for three and a half years. Eric Clifton is our commission member that wrote the actual narrative. And it was funny, at the meeting on Saturday, he said, he started out thinking, there's no way I could write five pages about the jail. It ended up being 17 pages. So, we're very excited that we're to this point, and we would like to welcome you to the ceremony and also the general public, anyone in the county, anyone within hearing range. We love you, Peter.
We love our vote. That's 505 Second Street.
Yeah, it says 503, because that's what the bill, USPS knows it as, 503. Price District has 505. Historical record showed it's 515, so we just picked one. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Oh, we have a public comment. Did you sign in?
We got Wayne Crank, he is donating 30 loads of road milks for the end, where the cement asphalt ends on Rocky Mountain. And he wants to extend that, and he gonna pay for all the materials, we just have to lay it for him. And he wanted to make sure we got this in public announcements today. And we need to put it on that agenda to accept the donation on the next court.
Wonderful, that's a, that's a great gift to the county, that's awesome. Any other public comments? Alright, we'll move to the Tax Assessor Collector August Activity Report. It's in your packet. Looks like where she's up to, her office is up to $515,000 in money's collected this year, which is a little down from last year. Last year was $534,000. Item number four, Consider the County Clerk Meetings From the Previous Meeting, September 11th, 2023. Motion from Commissioner Wiley and a second for Commissioner Shook. Is there any changes or amendments to it? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item number five, Consider the Treasurer's Financial Report, Update on Securities Pledge, presented by our treasurer, Pal Mal.
No report.
No report today, thank you. Consider the Auditor's Budget Amendments and Vouchers Payable, Madam Officer?
If you serve it. On the vouchers today, the total is $378,617.33.
There has to be a few biggie somewhere.
Out of the general is $53,398.08. The BGB, the CTF, that pre-seed three, this is for their contract work that they had done.
How much was that?
Total out of here.
Has the project turned out well? Motion for Commissioner Wiley, do we have a second?
Sure.
Second from Commissioner Creswell, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Please, continue.
Thank you.
We see, we recognize you.
Thank you. So, last year when we worked on the budget, the sheriff tacos, we did not budget a payment for them because there's a payment plus the $9,000 balloon note, and that's on two tacos and the pickup. So those are now due, for a total of $67,632.9 as the payoff. I pulled what was left in the contingency, and there's $130,000 in there. I think what we were thinking last year, we didn't budget, we might do it out of ARCA, but we haven't.
Let's do it, we're gonna get pretty tight on what we've got scheduled for ARCA right now, but I would, I'd rather, rather say that. Alright, we have a motion from Commissioner Creswell, we have a second from Commissioner Wiley, we have any discussion?
Yes, I will take it, I'm sure it's budgeted when I pay the bills, I made it to the test, and I think. Because we know it's gonna be right.
Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
So, you know, there's been something wrong with the chiller, and we were waiting on a quote for the compressor replacement. And we got the quote this week. Right now, it's working, we don't know when it's gonna crash. And I know y'all are gonna say it, it couldn't have been due, not for a while. The quote is $18,228.57.
Where are you gonna take that money?
Well, that's, I mean, it can wait, I guess, for this, till after the first of the year. We wanted to do that, I just wanna make sure that's what y'all need.
No, we definitely have to pick it, 100% have to pick it. But do we have money in budget this year?
Well, maybe so, because it'll take a little bit to get it, so probably wouldn't get it till after the first October anyway.
Let's do that. Thank you so much. Alright, this is gonna be the highlight of the meeting, item number seven, Discuss and Consider the 4-H Week Proclamation. I believe we have a proclamation. You're, you're normal, you are.
Yes, so thank you for having us. Today, we have some of our 4-H County Council Kids, and I am going to let them introduce themselves. So we can work on public speaking, not that everyone needs that, but we'll go ahead and let Ms. Truick pick off.
Hi, my name is Truick Creel, and I am in Southwood 4-H.
Hi, my name is Ava Creel, and I am in Southwood 4-H.
Hi, my name is Carly Dawson, and I am in Southwood 4-H.
Hi, my name is Axel Greenway, and I am Southwood 4-H.
And we also have Rainey 4-H, as well as only 4-H that weren't being able to be here today.
Texas 4-H is like a club for kids and teens ages 5 through 18, and it's big. It's the largest youth development program in Texas, with more than 350,000 youth each year, and 175 here in Young County. No matter where you live or what you like to do, Texas 4-H has something that lets you be a better youth.
You may think 4-H is only for your friends with animals, but it's so much more. You can do activities like shooting sports, where we offer archery, rifle, and shotgun, pure local. We also have food and nutrition, healthy, living, robotics, fashion, and interior design, photography, and even more.
Texas 4-H is a board Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service. And the Texas A&amp;M system, founded in 1908, 4-H is the largest youth development program in Texas. We would like to take a few minutes to test your commissioners' court on their 4-H knowledge. Gentlemen, will you take the challenge?
Yes. We accept. Challenge on.
4-H trivia!
Okay. What are the four Hs?
Heart.
Yeah, the deer.
Heart. Horses! Head.
No!
We got three. Hands, heart, head.
Our hands?
Yes. Heart, head, and?
Healthy!
Health!
Yes, health.
Okay, we need to add horses.
I pledge my blank to clear thinking.
Heart.
Yes! Correct! What projects contain archery and air rifle?
Beautiful.
Correct!
I wonder why you got that one.
How do you begin a motion?
Oh, this is bad.
How do you begin a motion?
How do you start a motion, word?
Oh, ah.
Finger bell! So close!
Two words, two words. Eye. There you go.
Which officer runs the meeting?
Presidente.
Correct! I pledge my hands to blank.
Where?
Service?
That, that's one, yes. Larger service, but that is correct.
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 I pledge my blank to better living.
Heart.
Incorrect.
Incorrect.
It is one of the Hs.
Correct! What is the list of business items to be discussed at a meeting called?
Agenda.
Correct! What project area has to do with sewing?
She's so, has it to do with sewing?
I don't, I don't like for them, close. I love that answer.
Fashion.
Correct!
You know what, that is a very fitting, that you're our, you are our fashion commissioner.
Which officer takes notes on the year?
Secretary.
Correct! What project has to do with cooking and baking?
Why don't know, what's the newer version named, super simple, blank and blank?
Health and nutrition.
Yes.
Correct!
You should be homemade.
I pledge.
It wouldn't come back up. But slap it, it'd stop.
I pledge my heart to blank, blank.
Did this one already. Simple service, right?
This is a different one, it's a different H.
Heart. I pledge my heart to blank, blank, two words.
Service.
No. Oh, no.
I changed all this if we forgot size.
You know what, you, if you could.
Well, look, if you were disappointed in us, I don't know if I'd be good.
And your loyalty. There we go.
Okay. Finish the slogan. Learn by blank.
Do it.
Yeah. Correct! Go! For my blank, my community, my blank, and my world.
That's a lot of blanks.
Tell them, tell them.
Wait, can we say the pledge?
Yeah, y'all do it, let's do the pledge.
I pledge my blank to clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living, for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
That's awesome.
C.T. started with that one.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I'll dance for them.
That's 4-H, mom.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions left?
I have.
We have one more, okay.
What is the 4-H in one? Family board.
Are you good? Okay. So, you would like, if y'all would consider the proclamation and the signing of it?
So our 4-H, our National 4-H Week Proclamation, whereas the Young County Commissioners Court is proud to honor the Texas 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service for 115 years of providing experience-based education to youth throughout the Wemser State. And whereas this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for all youth through their head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas the program, more than 550,000, where the program's more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from 8 to 18, come from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 30,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, and energies and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans through its innovative and inspiring programs, and continues to build character and instill the values that have made our state strong. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Young County Commissioners Court hereby designate October 1 through 7 as National 4-H Week in Texas, and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgroLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made this program a success. We'll sign that, so we give them one, and hold them one.
Then one trivia.
Oh, who would think one trivia? I don't know, I think.
News pass.
Mr. Rogers, maybe, but you have to ask it, okay, we gave.
I gotta fuck this function.
We gave the dysfunctional bell.
Okay.
Oh, so one of the things we'd like to add on is Mr. Creswell's stand-up. We have certificates at the office. Mr. Creswell, Mr. Creswell was actually nominated as our friend of 4-H this past year. And he's been, obviously, in our office, he sees a lot of things going on, he tends to step in often, and him and help of other commissioners, of course, have helped, have do a lot of things this last year. With leaving off with our van, the incident with that, and having it repainted, and then having retired and things like that with us. And so, just in general, I'm gonna tell you the memory of yours that you've enjoyed, I think we shared it before, but go ahead.
So, whenever I was on my way to Horse Quiz Bowl, I lost my tooth in one of our leader's trucks, and they thought it was disgusting.
Anyway, I wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Creswell, we have a certificate giving.
That's wonderful, congratulations.
That's great.
Congratulations, friend of 4-H this year.
Thank y'all very much.
Alright, well, thank you, let's get this one finished, is it signed completely? Let's get this signed, and you wanna get a picture from the paper, please?
Oh, two, okay.
I figured it was gonna be when he ate all your cookies.
My good cup, thanks, I'm gonna ask her my.
Yeah.
Really?
Mr. Owens, you're a 4-H family too, come on.
Alright. Gonna take a photo. Alright. Thank you!
Thank y'all. That's a volunteer for us, Mr. Goins, go take photos, we're getting into photos. Thank y'all so much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, you're welcome.
I'll send you that wish.
Grant held it on all. Thank you.
Mr. Creswell, when? Before, before we just leave that, where Lady Rec. Miller was getting the land pick, Scott did do quite a bit to help me get that done.
Alright, well, I guess we will reluctantly acknowledge. But I can honestly say the rest of the meeting is gonna be downhill. We have Pete. Oh, yes. Would like, would someone like to make a motion that we declare this week 4-H Week? We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley, it's second from Commissioner Rogers. All in favor? Any opposed? Proclamation passes 5-0. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank y'all very much.
Item number eight, and I'm sorry you have to follow this, does Gussin consider, oh, this is actually me. Does Gussin consider forensic audit for the Treasurer's Office? So Cheryl, when we asked to do an audit when we had the change in Treasurer, Cheryl has re-engaged our auditor, and she put in quite a bit of work gathering information for him. But, the good news is, it was, we got a clean audit.
Yes, but he, he pulled information, and we sent records from January, everything he asked for from January through July, and with no kind of things, so.
And this will help us probably in our, in our next audit, because.
I'm the last one, dude, that's fine. We got it ready.
We know it's clean.
We did, yes, yes. You know, so far. And so, here's, I guess, this that I need you to sign, and I'll prove it.
Alright, do anyone have any questions? I've had a chance to have some, some communication with Mike Edgen about it, and I know Cheryl had some communication with Mike Edgen, but. We kinda went up to the resignation point. Do we have a motion to accept the results of the forensic audit? Motion for Commissioner Creswell, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Shook, is there any discussion or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0, thank you, Cheryl.
Hi, Cheryl. Next time you bring something like this, can you blow up the letter?
I have several pair of these on my desk. You can have my letter.
Alright, Cheryl. Cheryl?
Thank you.
Hold that back, please.
Thank you.
So we don't get lost. All right, item number eight, we had this on the agenda last week, discuss and consider the two thousand and twenty-four sheriff and constable fees. The constables felt like their fees were still good from last year. They did not want to make any changes. I have not gotten any um, feedback from the sheriff's office to indicate that they would like to make any changes in it, so um, the recommendation is that we um, declare the sheriff and constable fees at the same levels that they were last year. Um, do you have any, does anyone have any feedback on that? If not, we'll entertain a motion. Motion from Commissioner Wiley, and second from, who did the second? Second from Commissioner Creswell. Any discussion or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number ten, discuss and consider the interlocal cooperative agreement for, for the, for the collection of ad valorem taxes. This is our um, agreement with the Young County Appraisal District, and it is in this packet. One thing that I, that I think is, is interesting, and, and we learned this at our legislative conference, that with this increase in homestead exemption, the, the cost for the appraisal district is going to shift away from the school and more to the cities and counties and other taxing entities. So it's uh, I don't know. So our, our responsibility is, is going to, or our financial responsibility is gonna, gonna increase um, with this change, but um, we have a motion to accept this interlocal agreement with uh, with the community for the YCAB. We have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Rogers. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item, um, this, item number eleven, discuss and consider nominations for Young Central Appraisal District Board. Um, that board turns, this is the time where that board turns over. Um, in the past, we've, this, this entity has nominated Mike Sykes to serve on that board. I talked to Mike about this a week or so ago, and he is very happy with the direction that the board is going. He has um, enjoyed serving on that board, and he would like to ask, he would, he would be willing to serve again if we asked him to serve. Um, and I, I think that's a great idea. He, he has really, really done, I think, a good job for Young County serving that board. Yeah. He's, he's one, he's definitely one of the leaders on that board. Is there someone else we'd like to consider nominating? Obviously, we'll, we'll have to, you know, there'll be a voting process. It's just a nomination for a spot, but. Huh?
You don't want it?
I do not want it. I have served that board, um, I have served on that board for six years. I, I, I'm gonna stick here.
Well, I would say that we may take our voting charity and vote Mike on that.
Well, this is just a nomination. This didn't, this didn't vote, but do we have, does someone like to make a notion, a motion to nominate Mike Sykes to serve on that board? We have a motion from Commissioner Creswell. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Wiley. There are any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, and I will inform the appraisal district that we nominated Mike Sykes. Item number twelve, discuss and consider interlocal cooperative funding agreement between Young County, Stevens County, City of Alhene, City of Graham, and City of Breckenridge for bond supervision. Um, this is in our packet, and this is a document that we, that we create and then we send it out um, to the other entities for them to, um, for them to approve. We have updated the last interlocal agreement from last year and updated it for what we've budgeted in our, in our budget. Um, but if you, if you look on page three of that interlocal agreement, the uh, the split on our bond supervision would be City of Graham, twelve thousand five hundred, Young County, nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, City of Breckenridge, seven thousand five hundred, Stevens County, seven thousand, and City of Alhene, four, four thousand. That's kind of held to the ends of the last several times we've done this agreement. Is there any questions or comments on that? Um, no, I haven't, I haven't reached out to them. This is just the time we do it, but um, I looked at, I mean, I looked it over and I didn't really see a reason to, to make any changes from the previous years. No, they haven't seen it yet, but we need to get it done now because that, that, that all happens in December, January, when the money changes hands.
Do you want something like a motion?
We, yes, we'll make a motion. We have a motion from Commissioner Creswell. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shook. Any, any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero, and I will put that on my. And it looks like I'm the only one of us to sign that one. Okay. Item number thirteen, update on the William P. Johnston Cemetery in the first meeting of the William P. Johnston Preservation Committee. Um, and then a separate item is discuss, discuss and consider closing the William P. Johnston Cemetery to new burials. So Dorman, thank you for being here. Dorman, myself and Ernie um, had the first meeting of the WPJ Cemetery Preservation Board, um, and we came up with quite a bit of, a list of, of things, like things we want to get done, goals, some short-term, some long-term, um, and then we kind of divided up tasks among our, among the members to kind of, to, to try to create a solution before the next meeting. And Ernie's gonna reach out, he's gonna, he's gonna help find some additional members for the board, and um, Dorman's gonna continue research to try to figure out who all is, is buried in the cemetery. Um, another thing, uh, the board thought was, was really important is that this Commissioners Court, since it is our cemetery and we're responsible for the cemetery, that we declare it closed and to not accept new bodies in there. Um, we would like to get a survey of the cemetery, and it's really two surveys. It's a survey of, of the existing cemetery as it is right now, and then a survey of what the original cemetery, cemetery per that deed looked like, because we're not sure if that extra, eh, you know, the extra land is south of cemetery, north of cemetery, just really what was that original track of that cemetery. And then another i- item that we're gonna work on is kind of reach out to archaeology departments across the state of Texas to see if anyone in their, in those departments would like to use that cemetery as a research proj- project for their masters or PhD or, or something. And, and then maybe we can get, uh, what's the, what's the?
Magamometer.
Magamometer to, to, to try to find un, unmarked graves out there. But it was a, it was a really good first meeting, um, and then I don't know if y'all have any questions, but, and Dorman, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
You know, the only reason we, I want to suggest, uh, I think the reason our group suggests that we close that cemetery, as far as I can figure out, the last burial in that cemetery is the nineteen sixties. And when Ernie and I were talking about it, in the early days, all those graves were dug by hand. And in today's culture, you use a backhoe, and because of the way that cemetery is situated, there is no way we can get a backhoe in there, number one, and number two, because there are so many unknowns in there, uh, it's our fear that once, if you were to go into that cemetery and start digging, then you might have more issues than we want to get involved with. And, um, you know, basically, a closed cemetery just means that there will be no more uh, future burials in that cemetery and that it uh, is closed for activity.
So I, I know we, thank you, Dorman. You know, talking about things on our to-do list, that cemetery doesn't have a budget in this budget cycle, so uh, we're, we're well aware that what we're wanting to do, where it's gonna, things that are gonna cost money, it's gonna have to wait till our next budget cycle. Um, we estimate that surveying the cemetery would cost about twenty-five hundred bucks probably, just based off some other surveys that we've done. So um, you know, maybe we'll have, maybe the preservation committee will have a fundraiser or, or something to get that done center. If not, that'll be part of the budget that, that we'll build for that cemetery, or, or request that we build for that cemetery when we do the next budget cycle. But um, the real issue before the court today is, is officially closing the WPJ Cemetery. Is there any thoughts on that?
Very happy. I'll make a motion.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Shook to close it. Second, second from Commissioner Wiley. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dorman. Appreciate your input. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider the application permit to install entry culvert in County Road Rightaway Dig Slide on Finest Road. Mr. Creswell?
Where they started that project out there, where they were gonna build all the homes, there was one home started, built, and it, it didn't have an entry culvert. Uh, so massively approve this culvert permit to go ahead and put one in there. That way, that house can have an entryway.
And are you making a motion? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Creswell. Do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Wiley. Any questions on this? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider application permit to cross County Road and construct a pipeline or utility on Turtle Hole, Turtle Hole Road slash White House Lane. Commissioner Wiley?
What they're doing is, is gonna be for uh, the town, because they have that and stuff on that. They're gonna start there about uh, where the line ends, and they're gonna take it down there. There's gonna be three new uh, pieces of land that they sold about before they did the White House Lane. They want to catch them three, they're gonna go to the right, going north, down Turtle, uh, White House Lane and pick up uh, Mr. Baron, Mike Baron down there. And that's where they're gonna swap at this point. So I want them to go ahead and accept that.
Second. All right, we have a motion. We have, we have a motion from Commissioner Wiley. We have a second from Commissioner Creswell. Is there any discussion or comment? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Now we have item number sixteen, discuss and consider application permit to clo- to cross, excuse me, to cross County Road to construct pipeline or utility on Country Club Road west slash east. Commissioner Creswell, or Commissioner Shook?
Uh, yeah, this is just fiber optics. They're gonna be boring under the road up at the Country Club, a couple of new events up there, so they're just uh, gonna be using beside the road and under, boring underneath the road to install any fiber optics.
And are you making that motion?
Yes.
Motion from Commissioner Shook. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Creswell. Any discussion or comment? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Um, Commissioner Creswell, I don't have more, um, have work on this. Oh, never mind, never mind. We missed it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we missed it.
She would have been there.
Yeah, no, it's there. My, that's my fault. I'm sorry. All right, item number seventeen, discuss and consider burn restrictions. Um, Aaron can attest to this. We've had quite a lively debate in the county between, um, we have a, we have a chat group with uh, myself, the sheriff's office, Jared Cook, TM, and all, all the chiefs with the volunteer fire department, and then for some that do not have technically savvy chiefs, their, their, their first assistants who, who will, who will get on here. And there's an overwhelmingly, I guess, an overwhelming desire to keep the burn ban on from, from the sheriff's department and the, and the volunteer fire departments. An issue that we're gonna have, and I don't know if it's really our issue, but Graham is wanting to have its homecoming bonfire tonight. Um, the Graham Fire Department was in my office on Friday. They're, you know, they, if the bonfire does happen, they're, they're gonna be on the scene. Salt Creek said they're gonna be on the scene. Um, only because of the burn ban, they've canceled their bonfire. City of New, or Newcastle High School canceled their bonfire. Um, in researching it, I'm honestly, I don't think our burn ban applies inside municipalities. Um, so I, I did call the, the Graham mayor this morning. Um, I, I had, like I said, I spoke to the fire department on Friday. I spoke to their city manager on Friday. I called the, the mayor today and told him that this is probably his call, not our call, but that is, um, if Graham does decide to go forward with the bonfire and we keep the burn ban on, um, we might, you know, it'll, it'll definitely blow up on, on Facebook. There's, there's, there's no doubt about that. Um, but what's everyone's thoughts on the burn ban?
Well, we are wetter, we're getting some green, but it's still, we've had how many fires last week?
Uh, there was two in Throp Gordon and one in Jack County.
Yeah, but.
Locally here, we hadn't had.
Young County hadn't had.
It's been a while since we can say that.
Yeah, he's not being real general. Places to show up a few out there.
Well, I gotta go. I'm gonna burn some brush piles. I do too.
I've had, this last week, I think I had three calls from people, but um, the people I'm talking to are, are really recommending, they would, they are recommending we keep it on.
Well, the next week's dry.
Is it, would anyone like to make any, is, would someone like to take action on this, or is this a non-action?
I need to respect those people that fight the fire.
I, I agree. That's, I'm, I, I'm leaning that way too. So I'll, I'll call the mayor of Graham and, and tell him what we did, and then he can make this call, but just be prepared, you're gonna, you're gonna hear from, uh, hear from people, I think. So we'll take no action on the burn ban. Item number eighteen, would someone like to adjourn?
Somebody.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're done. Thank you.
Yes, hang on, just one second. Hey, Aaron. Thank you so much. I really love this school. Thank you for. Yeah, yeah. Just go grab lunch sometime. Yeah.
Maybe we got a new place enough.
Why, something about, why'd you go try that?
It's been very well.
Okay, yeah, he does good. Well, that's, next couple weeks, so let's go have lunch. All right.
Hey, Aaron. You wanna go meet the girls tomorrow?
I know I got a lot of time. Oh, my gosh. No. No, I did. I did on everything. I. I, like that four H thing, I did it. Where, give me that four H thing.
Take advantage of things.
So, Ken, I need a lot of country back for Graham, all back for our people.
It's always good to see you.
I had.
Yeah, it's a good day, any day I'm not here, so.
So, I guess you.
Yeah, I figured out. I resigned from as chair.
Protested, if you can sign and walk around. We're getting triggered out there walking circles.
I hate, I hate that, that kind of stuff.
I'm gonna hide that way.
There's too many chiefs, only one Indian.
I'll take it. If any of y'all don't think he's out.
I'd like that one. Well, I'm not hurting something.
Oh.
Can you make that brandy small?
I gave her a.
Yes, so. Hey, does Newcastle back this church?
I thought it was this other thing, and, and I'm, I'll get your.
That's gonna be that back?
I don't have that.
When you mark the minutes.
I didn't know there was any in the church building. I didn't know there was any in the church building. You might have asked me. I did that. I'm fixing to do that. I've got a gene Baptist church. I'm gonna scan all their book library.
Uh, because, yeah, I'm gonna pick up files.
I know they have them, because we talked about it.
How long do you think they're on?
That was built, I think, 30.
Okay.
I think 20 was built. But they had already organized prior.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the little community, there's something a little Baptist church that.
Right, right.
See you, guys. Bye, Aaron. Thank you. Thanks, Dorman. Appreciate you.
Thank y'all. Newcastle.
Work on that this week, this week or tomorrow.
There's, uh, there's several different counties. Are you laying it over bikes or you laying it over, uh?
Yeah.